City of Norman. In one way, this is kind of a routine item. It's very, very important because this is one of the elements that we need to be watching because it helps us do the things that are in our strategic water supply plan. But at this point in time, this is pretty much just FYI. We don't need to take any action at this time. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ken.
Okay, thank you. And the mayor is absolutely right. The connection fee ordinance for 21107B says it lists the fees for connection fees that you have, but also mandates this meeting. It says that the council is to review the connection fees every two years. So it's an obligatory thing that you have to do. And so it goes back to just a little history. We hired Raftellus Financial Consultants to look at our connection fees, and they did this in 2016, just to see where we were and to see what was equitable and fair. That objective was to look at the industry standard methodologies, you know, just to make sure that we're doing it the way it's reasonable and customary and everybody can follow along. And then they proposed, you know, these are the maximum fees you can charge. It doesn't mean you have to charge them, but these are the ones that are defensible by law. If somebody would say, "That's not fair," these would be easily defensible and you could bank on them. Usually, they said, "The developing of water, wastewater financial plans, you would look at everything as a big package, not just the connection fees to try to fund your whole capital program, but the rate revenues and how you borrow your money, things of that nature." Because one thing is about water and wastewater utilities. That's a little bit different than electric utilities, or we're very capital intensive. So electric utilities are capital intensive, but they have a lot higher rates so they can cover themselves better. We put a lot of stuff in the ground that people don't see, and our rates are relatively low. And so that's what drives our -- is not the operations and maintenance, it's the capital. So in 2016, they looked at our capital plan. They looked at our 10-year capital plan. And then really, the end product of this is they looked at the growth portion of our plan, what's needed to fund for new customers compared to what we just replaced, again, because they're capital intensive. And we're about $50 million out of 232 million. That was the 10-year plan at that time. And this is what they also estimated. They said, you know, based on a normal household that uses 4,000 gallons a month, a hypothetical rate increase for the rates, not the connection fees, but for the rates, we should have had one in 2018. And this is just to kind of smooth out the rate increases. So we should have had one in 2018, '20, '22, things of that nature. Obviously, we didn't change our rates in 2018. I noticed like that, but that's -- we didn't. So this is their plan. It kind of goes with their connection fees if you look at them together. So our connection fee history, these are our ordinances that we use to get them on the books essentially. And I guess we just started in 1974. That wasn't here, but that's the first connection fee that we had. And then the last group, we raised it year after year. So we did a two-year connection fee increase rather than do it all in one step. And we raised it $225 a first year and another $200 the next year. And that kind of prompted us to say, okay, we did raise it in 2016. Per this report and per the ordinance, we really need to look at it again every two years. So that's what brings us to where we are today. And then the water rates, this is our rate, not our connection fee, but our rates were voted on by our customers. And the last water rate increase we had was January of 2015. So we talked about it mostly in 2014, and the vote was really January. So the other thing to consider when we look at connection fees, you know, it's not -- we always talk about that base fee. That's your normal three-quarter inch household fee. But they also go up somewhat exponentially because they go by meter size, and a two-inch meter can carry a lot more, more than twice as much water as a one-inch meter. That's why it looks like it goes up exponentially, by the way. So the homeowners, the regular single-family house would be a three-quarter inch, that's $1,000 for the connection fee, just as for water. But again, if you look at a business, a restaurant that has a two-inch meter, you know, they're $6,000, or an apartment house can be at $14,000 or $28,000. That's where we are now, and this is compared to the maximum allowed by law from Raftellus. That was their objective.
Councilmember Holman.
The maximum in the Raftellus study, that doesn't necessarily mean that's how much it costs to provide the services.
Based on their information, that would be defensible. You could go to court and you could say, you know, this is what it would actually cost if we had to start from scratch to provide X amount of water to a new customer.
So on a six-inch meter size, according to them, are we really losing, you know, $170,000?
Well, they said, you know, a six-inch meter could fund so many single -- they based everything on a single-family dwelling. And they're saying, again, the water that goes through a six-inch meter could be equivalent to, you know, a couple hundred or more single-family houses, yeah.
The figure basically was what we could legally charge. It wasn't a recommendation for charging that. It was you could, by law, defend this much money. You could charge that much money and legally get away with it. Yes, councilmember Behrmann.
Ken, in your opinion, do the connection fees that we charge accurately reflect the cost to fund the new water and wastewater capacity that's required to service those houses?
Well, that's a bigger picture, and that's a lot more philosophical and things for the council to decide, you know, because you could say, for every new customer that comes in Norman, maybe we should have a fee for a policeman and a fee for a fire engine and a fee for -- I mean, there's everything that adds up to adding people to your community. This is a fee that it does cost more money to connect, you know, we have to drill more wells, we have to get additional water supply from someplace to feed more customers. And then, again, we can look at the bigger picture. Because our rate, we have an inverted rate block where the more water you use, the more expensive it gets. And it could be -- it could be because of weather, but lately, since our last rate increase, our peak demand, which really drives these rates, is the peak demand, has been less than it had in the past. So the conservation words that's getting out and are a constant reminder of our customers to, you know, make every drop count, things of that nature. And the ordinances that the council passed, we have a freeze on an irrigation system. We have a freeze ordinance, so if the temperature below 35, your sprinkler system, if it's a new sprinkler system, will turn off. If it's raining, your sprinkler system will turn off. All those things are helping out. And those are things that we need to look at that we're not quite there yet, and that's what we paid. At one time, we paid Raftellus a lot of money to get into some of these details. And this is a brief overview of where we are and what direction we're going to head to. So I don't have a really, I guess, I don't know what the answer would be. It does cost a lot of money to get additional sources of water, but our customers are doing better.
I have a follow-up as well. Do you feel that the recent water rate increases have kind of relieved the pressure from the connection fees, that, you know, the water rate increase is really kind of covering the difference in what we're charging versus what it actually costs to provide services to all these new customers?
Sure. In any community, it's a balance. It's not, you're not going to get 100% where your water rate will never change because we're going to put all the rate on connection fees. But it's a balance of what do you want? Do you want more customers? Customers are good, but as a -- running a business like a utility, you know, I like customers, I like money. So connection fees are good. I like connection fees, but I like more customers, too. So it's a balance that the council has to look at. One of the other reasons, one of the other things is we want to cover our costs or make sure we cover costs that we can supply water to our customers, but there are other avenues that we don't charge now that I've proposed in the past that would help cover that, too, such as a fire fee. I mean, we have a lot of private hydrants or sprinkler systems that we don't charge a fee for, and you can. It's like an insurance policy, you know? If a business has a four-inch sprinkler system or a sprinkler system in a house, in the building, or a private fire hydrant that public can't use, it's in the back of their parking lot, they should pay a fee for that. They should, that's a reserve that we promised 1,000 gallons a minute out of that, so we paid something for that, you know? So there's other fees that we could look at, not just connection fees. But connection fees are good, I still like them.
I think the other, the piece that we talked about before, two years ago, when we talked about this, that's really important, when you're trying to decide on, okay, and you're going to talk about that in the end, do we raise the water rate more? If we raise them this much, do we raise the, how much more do we raise the connection fees? Because you're going to talk about that. But the other piece that's really important in the equation is how much money do you need to fund the things that we're doing? And are the fees that you're connect, and at that point in time, I understood you to say our connection fees and our water rate were sufficient to cover the things that we were doing. But now we have all more things that we have to do, so that's why we have to look at it again.
Yeah, and we are, obviously, everybody knows we're pretty unique. We let our, or make our customers vote on their fees or their water rates. And we, I think our group, our team does a really, really good job. Really, the last water rate was January of 2015, which really was the effort to educate all our customers in 2014. So it's already been four years since we have had a change in rates. There's not a lot of cities that go through these four, six, and eight-year periods without a change in rates. I think we're doing pretty well, and I think we're good stewards of our money for our customers.
Councilmember Holman.
Ken, don't cities like Oklahoma City just automatically goes up every year, I think?
Yeah, well, that's one of the things, we are a customer of Oklahoma City. We do buy a minimum amount of water from them until we get our wells drilled. And they built in like a 4.8% increase every year.
So we go several years without raising rates, and other cities raise rates every single-year, just in standards, so.
Yep.
Councilmember, Councilmember Behrmann.
Just a couple of things. Like on the connection fees, those go where? They go to the general fund, they go to the water -- I know the answer, I will, I want you to do it.
And the council is very, very good at that. The water fund is an enterprise fund, and all the money collected from our customers, whether they're connection fees or utility rates, stays within the water fund. And the same thing is our wastewater fund is separate. We cannot co-mingle those funds, don't want to co-mingle those funds. And things in with our sanitation division. So we have three separate lines of businesses, and they keep all their money to themselves.
How about impact fees?
Well, some people call a connection fee an impact fee, but if it's for water, then it stays in the water utility.
But the building impact fees?
The building impact fees, the connect, the inspection fees, the impact fees will go into the general fund.
You could call the project a general fee.
Right, right. So also on this, you not only got the connection fee, but you've also got the customer reliance going through it. So this customer comes in there, we get single-family homes, we get $1,000 upfront, but then we also get $24, $25 average fee per month going out there. So you've also got that kind of coming in there. Let me ask you, how does it work when somebody redevelops? Is it a connection fee on the very first one? Or is it, if I tear down a house and build another one, is there another connection fee?
No, there's not.
So when I tear down a single-family home and build one of these 14-room complexes?
It's based on the meter size. So if you change the meter size?
I change the meter size, yeah.
Then if you upgrade the meter, then we collect the connection fee on the difference. You still get a credit for what you paid upfront or what has been there. And if you downsize, you don't get money back.
But if I have a single-family home, whether I've got four people in there or two people or three people, it doesn't matter.
That's correct.
It's the same connection fee, and so.
Okay.
It's based on the meter size. It's based on the meter size that goes through there.
So that kind of brings us to where that the Raftellus, which is that RFC recommends is a city review its connection fees. They recommend it at least every five to seven years because the capital program really changes. But then the council went one step further, and by their ordinance said that the council shall review the connection fees no later than November 16th, and then every two years thereafter. So that's the purpose of what we're doing here. So this is, again, from 2016. These were the connection fees, single-family residential, this is connection fees. This is not the impact fee or anything. This is water and wastewater connection. And Norman are existing, that we still are, is it the 2975 thing? Again, the proposed was the maximum allowable. That could be at 59. We went through, since it was 2016, and looked at if any of these have changed. They really are very, very, some of them haven't changed at all. Some of them changed really, really minimally. The weird one was Lawton removed their connection fees. So they went from 2,000 down to like $290 for a meter set. So that was odd. I don't know why, they didn't say why. They did that just recently, this year. They reduced their connection fees.
So that Edmund fee, that 2,700, I thought that was higher than what it was before, but not?
No, I mean, that's where we are. Yeah, that still matches up.
Ken?
Yes?
Do you know what Goldsby is?
I don't know what Goldsby is.
I think Goldsby's 2,500.
Again, there's a lot of cities in Oklahoma, you know, we could, we could look at any one you want us to look at.
I'll give you information, like Goldsby, New Castle.
I'd like to know our neighbors.
Our neighbors, yeah, exactly.
I'm pretty sure, I just bought one in Goldsby, and it's expensive, in kind of.
Okay.
I think typically looking around, and that's a good idea to look at the ones in the area, typically looking around, most of the cities were considerably below what we are. But do you know what Still Waters is?
I do not. Well, it's on there.
Yes.
It's still that, it's still 970. Councilmember Higginson.
Ken, I'm just curious, do we have an explanation as to why Oklahoma City, I guess, for example, a large city, then more as our most immediate neighbor than Stillwater has a callous handle, I guess, why these other cities' connection fees are less than ours?
It's a balancing act that the, in this case, like Oklahoma City, it's a Water Utilities Trust, which you guys are the trust, decide whether, you know, you want the connection fees higher and maybe the rates lower, or maybe you have a fire connection fee, or there's other fees that could work into this, but it's a decision of the utility, the authority, the trust.
Both of them have higher monthly fees.
We're pretty cheap with our.
Higher rates. Oklahoma City's rate is much higher than ours. They get there monthly as opposed upfront.
Yeah, Stillwater is really high.
Really high. They had the highest water rates in the state for many, many, many years.
Yeah. It's just a balance.
So this just kind of goes back in the discussion about are we getting what it costs to? And so some people see this chart and they say, Norman's really high, we're charging way more than our other cities. Some people see this chart and say, we are charging more, but are we, are all these cities just subsidizing this cost? And, or not? And I know it's a mix of stuff, I understand that. But, you know, I'm less interested in what the maximum amount we can get is, and more so in what exactly does it cost to provide a connection to one single-family house? And are we getting enough to cover that cost? That's it.
Well, that would be.
And politically, do you want to do that? You want to figure out what we think it costs, and then do you want to do that? Because there's the political competition issue of do you want to be higher than everybody else in your area? So, I mean, there's, there's more than just how much it costs.
Well, you got the pipeline, too. If I build a house close to the water treatment plant versus on the west side town, you've got, I got more pipe, I got more. It should be more expensive to deliver water to the west side, it should be east side or corner.
Absolutely. I didn't realize that.
But once it's, but work pipes pay all of it because they got wells.
But we don't get any of those pipes for the water in Fort 5. Yes, I'm sorry.
And that's where you could do a.
I think councilmember Behrmann has a question.
Okay. I was kind of going back, and I saw, maybe just as, maybe it's a crude way to kind of quantify this, but it says here, "We're going to be adding capacity for new development to provide first 18,366 three-quarter inch equivalent connections." My rough math, that's on page two. My rough math that, you know, $1,000 per three-quarter inch connection means that that is approximately 18.366 million dollars, but how much is it going to cost us to add that capacity?
And that's a very good point that I'll get to.
Just ahead.
Yeah, just our last slide. Again, we look at how much water will we need? That was part of our 10-year plan and things. And just recently, the connections have been a little bit lower than they had been and had been planned by Raftellus in 2016. They looked at our history and they said, "We average about 520 new households a year." And in our last two years, we had less than that. So that might help, again, decrease the amount of new infrastructure that we need. And then the Raftellus report, again, remember I just looked at, they said about 50 million out of 232, it was about 22% of our capital need was for growth. That really hasn't changed, so that's still about the same. Our capital growth looks like for the next 10 years is a little bit higher, but then so is the amount needed for growth. So that's, that's still pretty constant. But one of the key things that goes to what you were saying is that Thursday, let me back up. So part of our capital plan and part of this Raftellus stuff was to look at, we did at that point need additional water supply because we're adding customers, we're still adding customers, but we did need additional water supply. We still do need additional water supply. But that was part of our capital plan. When we asked for rates for our customers, there's a whole bunch of things we were going to do with that money. One was upgrade our water treatment plant. You know, we spent 33 million, or we're spending, it's a two-year project, we're halfway through. $33 million just to upgrade our water treatment plant. Part of that is to meet the existing or the new regulations from DEQ, those are the things you have to do. And part of that is to build new wells. Some of those new wells were to replace some of our older wells as we work our aquifer. We now know we have a heavy metal aquifer. Just recently, we lost a well essentially because it just bumped over the 10 parts per billion for arsenic. It was going along good at six and eight, and then the last, it's based on quarterly numbers, and we lasted about 10.6 parts, 10.6 parts per billion. So you really, your choice is notify all your customers or you just turn that well off. So those things happen where we have to replace some of our source of water. But with that, is we'll also be drilling wells that will help supply new growth. One of the things that we argued about in 2016 was the last time we drilled wells was years before that, said, "How much does it cost to drill a well and how much water do you get out of it?" Well, if we have a little bit of patience, we'll have that number better. We have opening bids on Thursday for new wells, but a bid doesn't mean you drill it, that means it's a bid, you know? So this is another year project. We're looking at drilling up to 10 additional wells. We have only six sites at this point. It's not as easy as it used to be to get and to buy or lease one or two acres from property owners because now they're making, you know, especially out east, it's a trust and somebody has to contact the brother and the family and the mother-in-laws and the sisters to make sure they want to sell the property. So we have six locations where we can drill these wells. We really want 10. And so we're opening bids to say, this is how much a contractor will charge us to drill a well. So that'll be a nice, pretty good number. It's usually based on so many dollars per foot, so some wells are 600 feet deep, some wells are 450 feet deep. And then, how much water do you get out of a well? And some wells are 200 gallons a minute, some wells are 150 gallons a minute. So we could use these numbers on Thursday to guess pretty good, or you could wait a while, and then we'll have accurate numbers of, this is the water we're getting out of the wells, and this is how much they cost at that time.
Councilmember Holman.
Does the household, is that, is that just single-family homes or does it include apartments? Because we have seen a lot of our growth in that sector, more so than the single-family probably last few years.
And what we do when we develop rates is we say, that's one of the things we look at, is what's the average customer use? And the average customer, we base it on a three-quarter inch customer. So some new apartments, individually, media, the apartments, it's easier for the property management to say, "You pay your own stuff for electric and water," things like that. So it does include apartments where they don't have irrigation systems and things.
So that number, 393, 343, 2015?
That, that part. That part was.
Center city stuff.
Single family. I think this, this piece was just single-family. This wasn't a commercial group.
So I wonder if maybe we've seen a decline in single-family development in Norman, but maybe we've seen an increase in multifamily.
Yeah, you have.
So some people would say development and growth has slowed down. Yes, maybe in single-family, but.
You're picking up.
In multifamily, we're seeing, I would think we're seeing more growth in multifamily than more in Edmund than any other city besides OKC and San Diego, so.
I'm thinking, these are actually just meter sets. These are new customers, so it would include everything.
But Ken, would it really matter? I mean, they're customers, right?
Yeah.
Whether they live in an apartment complex or a single-family home, they're customers. So they're paying a monthly fee regardless. Doesn't matter where they live, they're going to use the same amount of water theoretically. I mean.
The only.
For person.
No, it's not for, this is not person, this is customers. Yeah, so you could end up a little bit with councilmember Holman saying, you could have an apartment house with, you know, units that has one big meter, and that's still one customer. Yeah.
I mean, we could, we could get the figures on that certainly over the last five years. We had a huge surge in multifamily. I don't think that surge is going on right now.
Not lately.
We haven't had much of any kind. Councilmember Behrmann.
So I was just trying to think, clarify my mind, the Raftellus report numbers of the max is based on, they base that on what it would take to reconstruct from scratch a water system.
They didn't include the distribution as much as they said, this is, the cost was based on, this is how much a well, an average at that time, we used, the last time we drilled wells, just like 10 years ago. Again, it's better when you use an average, you know, to drill 10 wells, because each well is different.
Sure.
So we said there was $700,000 for a whole, a well.
Right.
And then $200,000 to connect it to our system.
Okay.
It didn't include the water towers or anything, things like that. And they said, okay, based on that, the average amount of water that comes out of that well can feed so many houses, and you just divide that many houses into the $900,000 for the asset.
For the well, for the new well. And that cost of that well, we're going to find out next week, whether it's 700,000 or a million or whatever.
And that's a, it's a bid number.
Yeah, it's a bid number, the budget number that you're going to use for this.
Yeah.
Councilmember Higginson.
What kind of customers use a one-inch, the two, three, four, and six-inch meters? We talked a lot about the three-quarter inch, the, I guess, the.
That's mostly single-family residential.
What are the one-inch, two-inch, three-inch, four-inch, and six-inch? What kind of customers are those?
Well, obviously, it would be bigger customers that have a bigger water demand, whether it's a duplex or a fourplex. Some duplexes can get by with a three-quarter, some prefer to have more water, but the fourplex would be probably a one-inch. Restaurants go, you know, inch and a half to two-inch. There are apartment houses that would use a three, or not necessarily apartment houses, but like hotels do a three-inch meter, things of that nature, that they need a lot of water at one time.
I guess, just doing some rough calculating, if you will, and I don't know if the Raftellus maximum numbers are good or not, but if they are, if you look at it from a, I'll take maximum numbers are good or not, but if they are, if you look at it from a, I'll take the three-quarter inch one, for example, the largest one, we're at about 30% of the maximum, but we have some of these other categories where we're at 19%, like the one-inch and the two-inch meter size. And, I mean, that may just be the way things have worked out over time, but there may also be something, you know, something worth, I don't know, discussing, do we levelize? Levelize, levelize the fee in the sense of that it's 30% across board for everybody and so maybe some of these other... Maybe where the percentage is the same and so maybe some of the other categories, other meter size categories would, interestingly, the 1.5 inch is also at 30%, but the other categories would maybe go up. So I'm just throwing that out there. I'm not sure why those percentages are different and, you know, just the way it worked out in the numbers.
It's an option for you guys to consider.
Sure.
Do you kind of want to go move forward with what you're actually recommending right now that we do?
This is, you're obligated to review the rates at this point in time. If you so desire to want to change and you can, I would, personally, I'd like more certainty in developing rates and so I would wait as much as a year or do this the next two-year piece because our, again, we want to be drilling 10 wells. We have six property owners that will allow us to do it this time. We're still negotiating, still trying to get those 10 wells. One of the other options that we talked about briefly, we mentioned to you guys is a first-ever type thing is a horizontal well. Remember that? It's going to cost about three times as much as a regular vertical well, but we could possibly get six times as much water. So that would actually, on a per-unit basis, reduce the cost of new water, not compared to this, not compared to what we charge existing, but compared to the maximum allowable. It wouldn't be as much if I said that right. Anyway, we're at the process of, and that's why, again, we haven't asked for a rate increase. My limited experience here is I think we're more successful as a council and as a city government and as an authority, rather, as an authority to ask our customers for a rate increase when we can point to the things we've done with their money in the past. And so it's nice that we say, last time you gave us money, we said we would drill new wells, which we're going to be doing. We said we would upgrade our treatment plant because we have to, which we said, and we can show it. So it's done, not, you know, we're almost there, give me more money. I'd rather wait until we have things to say, you know, you trusted us with more money and now you can go touch and feel and see what we did with your money.
Okay, Councilmember Wilson.
I don't want to go too far down this rabbit hole, but can you give me a brief hydrological tutorial on the horizontal? And the reason why I ask is most of these wells are going into Ward 5, right?
Yes.
And I'm getting questions and there's the conspiracy that you're going to suck all the water out of the ground and there'll be no more water for our wells. So can you kind of touch on that a little bit? And how, and what...
Nichols Hills thinks we're going to suck all the water out of the Garber Wellington, so, yeah.
Okay, so yeah, maybe on that, that, specifically the horizontal well, at what depth does that generally go compared and where does a household well end up?
Most household wells are in the 100-foot range. Our wells are 400 to 600 feet, so there's a confined space between the two. It's actually different layers of aquifer, so, and we make sure that we're not affecting any of the surface wells, more surface wells. And a horizontal well is simply, you know, one, I think we talked about this, one person, hydrogeologist described our aquifer and the sand layers that we have. We have sand and then shale, which is, that helps confine the aquifer from the top to the bottom type thing. So you have sand and shale and sand and shale, and they said, you know, when you get to the 400, 500, 600-foot range, it's like, the sand layers are like a bucket of snakes. It's not a nice horizontal line. They're just all squiggly in among themselves. And so the horizontal well is, we'll back up. So a vertical well is you drill a hole and once you pass 300, 400 feet, you try to get a sand layer and that's where you put a screen. There's no sense of putting a screen where you have shale. And so you might get a 30-foot sand layer and you get one or two gallons a minute per foot from that, and then you drill, you're still going down and you went through shale and then you get another 10-foot sand layer and then you get another six-foot sand layer, you know, it's just a hit and miss. So with a horizontal well, what they would do is they'll drill the first vertical one and they'll try to find a big fat sand layer, like 20 feet thick sand. And then they'll come back at an angle, so you have your vertical and they'll come back at an angle and they'll try to, it's not like it goes at a right angle, just goes down, turns right. They'll come back at an angle and try to follow that sand layer for a couple hundred feet. Again, it's not like oil wells will follow a layer thousands of feet, maybe maybe 200 feet or 250, something like this. And then maybe if it works this way, we'd go back 90 degrees and do it that way.
But it isn't the issue that no matter how efficiently we're able to get water out, there's a limit to how much water we're allowed to take out.
Yeah, we still have to have a permit. I mean, we're still permitted by the Oklahoma Water Resources Board and what we can take out and as...
We could drill wells all over the place, but we could only get a finite amount of water.
Yeah, but we have enough of a permit because every time you subdivide your property and especially if you're in a subdivision where you get city water, you're relinquishing your right to your water rights because we're providing you water as a developer, so we get the water right.
So you can offshoot your own well.
You can double dip essentially.
Yeah, okay.
You could still, if you lived in a subdivision and you were a property owner and you wanted a well for irrigation, you still have the right to drill a well. But again, it's only like 100 feet deep or something.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Councilmember Castor.
The other thing I would point out is the Raptellus report, they looked at how much cash you have on hand and what your future means during business. I mean, we're sitting on $8 million right now and our funded balance is projected to be $15 million. So we've been, it's not like we have zero money. I mean, we've built money up over, well, we've built money up in the past anticipating future needs, future capital needs. I mean, we're not breaking even, we're not charging to break even. We're building up reserves because we anticipate future capital needs. Are we just overcharging?
That'd be nice, but no. On the water fund, the money, no, he's correct. If you look at the fund balance, the fund balance looks nice and fat and happy because as an example, we borrowed $31 million and we haven't spent it all yet on our water treatment plant. But at the end of our water treatment plant, the money we borrowed will be gone. And so, you know, right now it does look like we have a nice cash balance because we borrowed money and that's sitting essentially kind of sort of in our bank account, but we know we're going to use it. So we don't, that would be foolish. We don't overborrow or overspend where we don't have income to cover our debt or cover our expenses. But in the next couple of years, I mean, once you finish the water treatment plant and we finish these wells, we're going to need more money.
That's anticipated in the 2016, the long-term water statement.
Yeah.
There was rate increases built in there, but I mean, that's anticipated.
That's correct.
We knew that. So this is not...
And that's what you said either.
That's kind of what you were talking about earlier before in your slide about, although Raptellus had that, we also had, I think 19 was supposed to be a water rate increase. They said 18 on theirs, but that strategic long-term water supply hasn't broken out what anticipated capital needs are in a water rate. Now we've got to update that for cost and that kind of stuff, but that's kind of a good guideline baseline to have.
And that's exactly why you do a strategic planning. Say this is a long-term, and like you said, capital needs might change and costs might change, but here's a long-term look and here's when we're going to need an inflow of cash. Things have to change.
So within the next two years, we're going to have to look at a water rate increase and connection fee increase, we think.
Yes.
That's what we think. All right, Councilmember Wilson.
I know this is an unlikely scenario, but just kind of a devil's advocate, is there a cap that can be in that fund balance? Like you could just, you could go max out on the Raptellus, you could have a very, and you could just have a ton of money sitting there without any real expenses attached to it. Kind of a slush fund?
You're regularly charged as much as you want to. Now, you may not, I mean...
Never get anybody go?
If we had a $6,000 connection fee, I'm not sure we'd have a whole lot of connections.
Right. But I guess I'm just trying to kind of think of the other side of it. We don't also want to max it out because we would have...
You theoretically are overcharging.
We are overcharging.
Excess money.
Is there a law that keeps us?
No, but that's what you guys are the trust that you would look at it and say your fund balance is growing, maybe we ought to reduce our rates in one category or another or you have that right too.
So, and the other kind of question is if we undercharge on connection fees and we're asking for rate increases, that's a balance that we've got to kind of tread on as well because it's hard to go to voters and ask for that rate increase if we're not charging per connection fees.
That's correct.
Councilmember Hickman.
Just to be clear, if, can we use water connection fees, water rates, wastewater connection fees, wastewater rates, whatever, any of these utility things? Can we use, need those dollars that, as Councilmember Wilson was saying, might be accumulated in this fund? Can we use those dollars for, to address stormwater issues, to build a senior center, to fund fire and police, to hire more city employees like an assistant city manager or whatever? I mean, can we use it for general operations?
No, that's...
Why?
I know you know the answer, I'm sorry.
Why would that be, Ken?
I think it's because, no, I don't think, it's because it's, you set it up this way and that's great. It's an enterprise fund and we can't even mix water and wastewater or sanitation rates. So it's just three separate funds. And as I stressed, you know, before, every time we ask for our rate increase from our customers, we get no tax money. We pay, the water fund pays a million and a half dollars a year into the general fund as equivalent as a franchise fee. So we help support the general fund. It doesn't go the other way around.
Councilmember Holman.
I would just want to make it clear to everyone, come May of 2019, we will have only had two water rate increases in the last 20 years, 2006 and 2015. I don't think any other city anywhere could probably say that. I think we've done a pretty good job of managing.
That's also one of the reasons we have some of the lowest water rates as well, not just, yeah, we have some of the lowest water rates.
We're usually doing 68% increase, that's not what we do.
We do. It's a big stair step. It's not a gradual increase, I'll admit. You know, when we ask for a water rate or sewer rate increase, it's a chump. You know, it's a big step. We don't do these nice little gradual things. And then Anthony will go absolutely nuts if I say, you know, one of your options is to reduce the franchise fee that the city charges the utility.
Or increase it.
Well, we pay the maximum amount, you know, compared to any franchise, whether it's an electric utility or gas utility, cable company, telephone, we pay at the highest rate as any of those.
But you use more of the, you use more of the, right away than anybody else does either. Your pipes are bigger than the cable.
Okay, any more questions? If not, I will adjourn this meeting.